Call the meeting to order at 6:30. Um, agenda item number two, the first thing we have is a public hearing. Okay. So the Pembroke School Board Public Hearing Notice is the Pembroke School Board will hold a public hearing tonight, June 3rd at 6:30 PM at Pembroke Academy to discuss withdrawing $27,860.17 from the Instructional Materials Trust Fund for items such as science supplies, science textbooks, math textbooks, foreign language textbooks, and reading curriculum supplies. So I will open the public hearing at 6:30 PM. And we don't have anybody in our audience, so I will keep it open until 6:40 PM. All right, number three is public comments. Um, and we don't have anybody here for public comments, so we can go on to number four, Agenda Review.
I have a couple of things if you don't mind. Um, one is we have a donation that Dr. Morris is going to talk about, if we could put that under Immediate Business. And then also I'd like to add a conversation about summer hiring under Immediate Business. Right?
Anybody else?
I don't know if we need to add this since it's already a C under Non-Public, but I have an item for C.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Um, under Immediate Business, also, I guess I'll add an F just a quick conversation that Carrie and I wanted to have. So, and that's we'll just say it's the fair funding conversation. Anybody else? Good? Okay. Uh, number five, we have minutes of our previous meetings from May 7th. Uh, the May 7th Non-Public and May 20th. To approve uh, the minutes from May 7th, the Non-Public from May 7th and the May 20th minute. Any discussion on any of those?
Somebody second it?
I can did. Does anybody have any edits or any discussions on those? No? All those in favor of approving the May 7th, May 7th Non-Public and the May 20th Meeting Minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Nope. Easy. All right, Principals Report. Um, we will start with Hill School.
Um, okay, Hill School, so we just finished, well, we have a couple of stragglers to finish our SAS makeup. And we're really excited, the outcome, so I'd love to kind of at an upcoming meeting, share where we are, kind of like how the process to get us where we've been, because there's been huge changes in growth, which we're really excited to share with everyone, but I want to do it in a package for you. Um, and so with the SAS being done, we now finish what we call our benchmarking, which is iReady. Um, and that's this week, and then we should be wrapping it up to have just a picture of the end of the year for us. We have, our chorus is performing at the State House on Thursday, it will be livestream, if anybody's interested. Um, June 13th, we have our Field Day, we have our cohort of, uh, high schoolers who are heading on over uh, to us to help out with that, so we're excited, we love having them there. PALS also has sends a lot of, we have a lot of volunteers, I think we get somewhere about 25 from the high school and sometimes equally the same amount or a little bit less from PALS, so we have a really great uh, support with volunteers for that day. Um, today we had a kindergarten puppet, the kindergartners had a puppeteer come in. Um, it's what they do instead of going on a field trip, every year they have them come in and, uh, this lady comes in and PALS uh, funds that and all you, you hear like just squealing laughter. Like, it's hyster- they think it's the funniest thing ever, and she just has these giant puppets and it's this one-person show and she comes in and the kids just go crazy for it, so that was a lot of fun. Um, our first graders went to see Science Center yesterday, because this is the, you know, all the field trips and everything all tend to come together at the very end, very exciting. Um, we have a cohort of teachers, those of us who have been doing the letters training, it's an 18-month journey. Uh, we're about finishing that up in June and into July, so we have a really good group of teachers that have gone through the letters training, which is the science of reading, um, how to teach phonics and stuff like that. I can't, like, that training in and of itself and all of us going through it night and day, like, it really has transformed instruction in our building and just the level at which we're able to help our students, which I think, which I know we'll see it when we see the progress our students have made, so for that, I'm extremely thankful that we had that opportunity. Um, this past weekend, we had girls on the run, they did their 5K in the rain and then their pink tutus, but they went out there and they did it. Um, and then we just, one last thing we have, on the very last day of school, we do a step-up day where we have the kiddos just very similar, kind of go up into the next grade to kind of meet teachers. Um, kind of think about next year, get a chance to say goodbye to everybody, and then off they go, so. That's pretty much going on at Hill School.
Any questions? Comments?
Just one, um, that, the, what's the letters training that you're doing? That you're, you've already implemented some of those, right, already? Yeah, okay, were you talking about this?
Yeah, it was in two parts, so the first, if you think of reading as teaching like the mechanics of reading, so phonics and how to read, and then you have like the comprehension portion of it, the first four units, which most of us went through, um, you know, about a year ago or so, that's, and it, you can walk away from it immediately. And I think that's why we've seen the growth, we've had like a year and a half of being able to implement that.
Thank you.
All right, and then moving on to TRS. Thank you. I'm gonna make Dan wait. Because this is gonna go off in one second. All right. So, 6:41, I will close the public hearing. Is anybody want to make a motion to approve withdrawing our $27,860.17 from the Instructional Materials?
Yeah. Yes. I just want to remind the board, um, $45,000 was approved to be expended, but we weren't ready with the other funds, so we need to keep in the fiscal year, so we're doing 27 now, and then after July 1st, the remainder will be ordered, and you'll do a public hearing next year, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I can do it, but I'll have to read it again.
You do?
So, I move the Pembroke School Board approves withdrawal $27,860.17 from the Instructional Materials Trust Fund for items such as science supplies, science textbooks, math textbooks, foreign language textbooks, and reading curriculum supplies.
Sure. Except for, I have some notes on it. Here, you have it? Okay. Any other discussion? If not? All right, all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain? Any nays? Okay. Now we will do Dr. Morris for Pembroke Academy.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we had our spring concert for our music department last, uh, week, that went very well. Uh, we, our unified volleyball team made the semifinals for the playoffs, they lost, uh, in Dover to a very talented team, uh, but they had a very successful season. Our baseball team will be heading up to North Conway on Thursday for the first game of their hopefully deep playoff run, we'll see, they're on a four-game winning streak, so they're pretty excited. Uh, CRTC seniors uh, graduated from CRTC in a ceremony that happened at Concord High last Thursday night. Uh, the PA Music Department will hold an open-mic, uh, performance tomorrow night here, I think that starts at 7:30, so that's probably not going to conflict too much with the TOS show. Uh, and the PA Athletic Department is hosting an induction ceremony on Saturday at 12:30, where they will be inducting, I believe it is, six new inductees into the PA Athletic Hall of Fame. Uh, and then we obviously have a lot going on in the next two weeks. Uh, next week, we're going to have our academic award ceremony for our class of 2025 on Tuesday uh, at 6 o'clock. Convocation will be Wednesday at 6 o'clock, and we'll be inducting a new member into the PA Hall of Fame at that ceremony. In addition to that, we have a few, we have a music performance by one of our graduating seniors, uh, and we will have two students reading their senior essays, uh, in addition to our fourth Honors Student Reading, uh, an essay, and our third Honors Student Reading an essay as well. And then, uh, we will, during the day on Wednesday, we'll have our Class Day Celebration, uh, where we will um, not only honor the achievements of our graduating class, but a lot of achievements, uh, from throughout the student body. Uh, it's similar to our Semester One Academic Awards, but there are some additional end-of-year things that we include in that. Uh, that is also the day where at the conclusion of that ceremony, uh, students will head out for the Class Day BBQ, and then that is the early release day where they'll be dismissed at 1:00. So, um, just so everyone's aware of that. And then graduation, the main event, will be 5:30 uh, Thursday, um, the 12th, and that will be at Fisher-Cat Stadium. So, really looking forward to that. That's all I have for you.
Any questions, comments for Dr. Morris? All right, moving on, we have Facilities Report, which I think was in the drive. Sure. Okay, so, uh, this is from, it says, "Good afternoon. Facilities Department would like to thank Ms. Sherman for all of her years of service to the Pembroke School District. We and I truly appreciate everything she has done for us and wish her nothing but happiness in her upcoming retirement. Thank you, Patty. We also would like to thank Mr. Berube for all of his years of service to the PSD Pembroke School District, sorry, and wish him nothing but the best as he heads into retirement. Thank you, Josh. Last but not least, we would like to thank Dr. Dan Morris for all of his years of service to Pembroke, to the Pembroke School District, and we wish Doc nothing but success in his future endeavors. Thank you, Doc. I would like to give a special shout-out to Eric Temple. Eric is our Facilities Foreman and specializes in grounds, field maintenance. We are coming off a tough weather stretch, and Eric has shown great pride in maintaining our facilities and our athletic fields. Our fields look fantastic. Thank you, Eric." Thank you, from Josh. Thank you. And next Student Report. I'll turn it over to Campbell.
Um, not too much to report from Senate. Um, we held our Executive Council Elections three weeks ago, so we elected within Senate the officers that lead Senate. Um, we elected a new President, Vice President, Secretary, Historian, and Treasurer for the next year. Um, Senate's big end-of-year event is that we are putting on Class Day this year. Um, we were able to secure a total of $250 in donations from grocery stores, we had 100 from Hannaford, 50 from Shaw's, and 100 from Target, so, uh, we thank them for that. Um, we actually, we received enough in donations that we're also able to provide vegetarian options for people with, um, alternative dietary needs, and, um, Senate will also be supervising the Dunk Tank and Scooping Ice Cream during the event.
So, thank you. Any questions? Comments?
In the Dunk Hen, Dunk Tank.
Yeah. Yeah, um, fortunately-
Campbell, Campbell.
We had several Senate volunteers, but, but, um, apparently students were not allowed to to be in the Dunk Tank.
Thank you. Carrie, Exec Board?
Um, Exec Board has not met since we, we last met. Um, and we are meeting on June 24th, thank you. Um, at 5:30. That's all I got.
Okay, to be continued.
I have a report also.
Okay.
From CIP.
Yeah, I'm like- CIP?
Yes, see, I just, heads up, uh, CIP starts on July 17th. So, that's all, nothing, nothing big. Um, I also asked Jerry, who is basically the de facto Chair, to include Carrie on the emails, so she'd be abreast of what's going on since she's alternate the bu- budget also, so.
Thank you. Seems early. All right, number seven, Agenda, we don't have anything, okay. Moving on to number eight, uh, Media Business, A, we have 25, 26 handbook changes.
Hey, Dr. Morris, do you want to start with PA?
I can, uh, we only have a few, uh, very minor changes for you. Uh, the first one is the early graduation language. So I'm sure you remember back in, I believe, February, uh, the Board updated their policy, uh, relative to early graduation, and so we wanted to, um, we wanted to reflect that, but also in conversations we had in our Pembroke Academy Leadership Team Meetings, uh, there were questions that came up where like, a student is on an early grad plan, do they, when do they begin to get the benefits of, you know, some of the upperclassmen privileges? And so we just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that once they're approved for an early grad plan, that they will then be considered at the same grade level as their peers for that year of grad. So, um, we have a lot of kind of privileges that are tied up in year of grad, so we just wanted to make that make that clear. And I guess just navigationally for you, looking at this, uh, red is the proposed change or addition to language, and the orange is really just like, uh, commentary, that wouldn't be. National Honor Society just made a, uh, an adjustment to the GPA um, for eligibility. And then Electronic Devices, there was a a proposed change to take away, uh, that, um, phones are allowed during pep rallies, and the reason for that is, we have had, unfortunately, had um, two incidents where, um, during pep rallies, students were, students recorded other students or took pictures of staff members and then posted those on social media, and so we wanted to avoid those things in the future. Uh, phones are used during winter carnival for some things, and kids have been good about that. You know, so, um, that wouldn't be included in quote-unquote pep rallies, but, um, just to avoid those situations in the future, we wanted to make sure that they weren't being used. And that's it, it's a very small list this year.
Dan, I just have one, just a quick, just, yeah, I see that it says this was a request from the co-advisors, but is there with, with lowering the grade point average, um, is that because we were not getting as many members reaching that 3.7?
They didn't express that to me.
Okay.
They that is a group of very academically motivated students, uh, and, I mean, I think like the majority of our top 10 every year are also NHS, you know, students. Um, I think there may be, um, an emphasis to just broaden the, the size of the group. Uh, they, they do, and you'll see when I talk a little bit, uh, later about donations, that they do a lot of good work, and, uh, these are students who are in a lot of different activities and are sometimes overextended, and so having more hands to share in that, I think, would be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just a point of clarity, that's a weighted GPA, right? That's not the-
Uh, that is-
I just assume it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we also, um, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, the cellphones, I, I, if we need to table this conversation, that's fine, but there is conversation about legislation, we're gonna have to go back and change it again.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the 25, 26 PA, uh, parent-student handbook.
Second.
No other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Any no's? Nope. Thank you.
We have no proposed changes to Three Rivers this year, um, so if you want to go for Hill School, that'd be great. Thank you.
We don't really have a lot of changes, just the first one is that, you know, we go through and we update all the dates or any calendar changes, current enrollment, those types of things. Um, we changed the school profile piece where we just took out, currently there's four classes per grade level, because that is shifting just following the cohorts. Um, we just took that particular piece out. Um, music, Ms. LaRose just gave me a couple of changes to, I, you know, show, uh, specific, um, instruments that they're playing, couple little edits here or there. Under absences and attendance, these are very similar, um, we don't use an attendance-absence form, and we don't require students to communicate their absences five days ahead of time, we obviously work with, uh, parents, and then students, the teachers really manage if students have to make up formative or summative assessments, since it's competency-based, if we have enough evidence, we don't require the student to make it up, so that really is something that the teacher manages individually in their classroom. And as you can imagine, that's different K through 4, what that would look like, so we just removed those. Um, everyone manages those particular absences in their classrooms. Um, we just took out fire drills and, and this work, it's a safety drill section, the, just the word. Um, and then the only other thing, which you can imagine, Item from Home is one that we talk about a lot. Um, we just went to all toys. Instead of very specific trading cards, collectible, all toys, unless it's something that the teachers are working on, it's a special occasion, that type of a thing. Um, and those are pretty much ours.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just, um, Wendy, a couple of things. So, for absences, um, this isn't, this is not, the change to this is not saying students aren't allowed to make up their work, it's just that they're not required, correct?
More, it's more formative and summative assessment, so like, if you missed a test, like, that type of language type of a thing, they're always we don't ever dock a student, whether it's unexcused or excused, if they miss an assignment, because we, we just get rid of that kind of a thing, we have multiple opportunities for them to show that they've mastered or they're proficient in the competency, so they never get dinged one way or the other if they're not there.
Then the only other thing I was going to bring up was the trading cards, I know you're taking it out, but I, I wonder if that's going to cause more issue with parents who are saying, "Well, it's not a toy, it's a trading card, it's a card," you know, so I just don't, I don't know if you're opening yourself up to some trouble, because I know those trading cards are pretty important.
We, I think I'm always gonna have those trading cards, toys, all of that, I just work with each individual parent at the time and explain, and you, everyone's usually pretty good about it, right, they understand how it can impact the learning environment, or Arguments on the Bus, which is our favorite place with trading cards, that's usually where you get it. Um, so, you know, I usually work with everybody individually for that, but I think we'll always have a little bit of that that we're working through, thank you though.
Hey, uh, I'm just going to attendance right now, I'm just curious why we got rid of, uh, requesting a parent or guardian to inform the schools that their kids might be out of planned vacation, whatever. Um, to me, that kind of like is just kind of like being an adult. So, I, I mean, that's-
So they notify us, we're not requesting that it's done like so many days ahead of time, I, you know, families are really good about emailing the front office, letting us know when they're gonna be out, we have a lot of parents that will let us know ahead of time, those types of things, we don't use an absence, anticipated absence form, we just ask them to email the front office, we don't really have a an issue with that, um, like I said, everyone's really good about communicating with us. The only hiccup with attendance we get is having to track down maybe why a student is absent, so Ms. Mayer will make phone calls every morning to find out why a student's absent. But usually people are really good about letting us know ahead of time if a child's gonna be out. We don't typically provide work, because that is a lot on the teacher, and you can't what happens in the classroom, you can't put in a packet and send home.
Right.
So, that's why everything we're doing really, it circles back around, so they will have opportunities when they get back um, to kind of make up that work, or to, you know, whatever it was that they missed.
Yeah, I was just, that, that last blurb on the thing kind of made me think for a second. Um, so really, basically, it's getting rid of the anticipated absence form. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Somebody want to? Motion to approve the changes to the 25, 26, uh,
Motion to approve the changes to the 25-26 Hill School Handbook.
Second.
Any other discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody no? Anybody abstain? All right, now we have fiscal year '25 update and end-of-year purchases.
So currently, your fund balance is anticipated to be $452,000. But minus the $400,000 in warrant articles, that's a balance of $52,000. We did have a request to release $10,000 from next year's budget that would include a server, it's a NAS device. I don't remember what the explanation of that was, and I don't have notes from Josh, but it's something to do with servers and technology. One of those is slated to be purchased. And then some textbooks and whiteboards for Three Rivers School. We would request to purchase those now and not to exceed $10,000.
Is anybody have any conversation or anybody want to make a motion? Motion? Yeah.
Just gonna make a broad motion to approve the surplus request for fiscal year 2025 or 2026?
It'll be this year.
2025, okay. Thank you.
Not to exceed $10,000.
Not to exceed $10,000.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's, abstain? No.
I think the only remaining question was whether you wanted to put any other funds from this fiscal year. I think the priority was paving. And I did ask Josh sort of, you know, is there a minimum amount that you could actually work with to do some paving? And he told me, I didn't think the paper. I think it was $10,000 that he would need to do any one project or section. So we don't have a huge balance.
As it is?
Yeah, I'd like to leave it as it is.
And we did, we subtracted from the last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. What you approved, yep.
Okay. Else? You guys are all good. Okay.
It's me again. So letter C is review of non-public minutes. During school vacations, Lexi, and I think she did it by herself, went down into the dungeon to pull all of the non-public sealed minutes, because you remember that policy that requires you have to review them. And we were sort of waiting to see how many there are before you came up with a plan to get them reviewed, and you have 73 of them. So you are allowed to have a designee review those for you. I didn't, I did not have her open any of the envelopes until I heard from you about how you wanted to move forward. So if you want to designate that to superintendent, you know, slash executive assistant to start opening the envelopes, we could make a list of, you know, you have to, the new spreadsheet has to be kept by the date of non-public, what the topic was. So we could sort of separate them into any student matters. It's, they're gonna need to remain sealed. So if there are things that we say, oh, 15 years ago, we approved, you know, an RFP for this company, those can be unsealed and sort of make lists of what the topics were and advise you on whether they should be, remain sealed or unsealed. And then if, you know, if one of you wanted to review the stack and this by subject, you could certainly do that. But that's probably the easiest and fastest way to get them looked at.
I think that's a good plan, and I would volunteer to be the person to go through them as we... Yes, that'd be fine.
The, the one question I have, so, and I assume it's okay, but I just want to ask the question that is, would there be any material in those sealed minutes that the school board should not be privy to?
I will review them before I give them to Carrie, so I don't put her in a, in a position where it's something that she doesn't want to know or doesn't want to see. If there's something sensitive, I will let the board, or I'll let Melanie know or something. I don't, I have no idea what's in there, but we'll check it out and group them, like I said, by staff matters, student matters, and other.
Okay, thanks.
Do you need us to?
We do.
Okay.
I know. I'll make a motion to do what Patty just said. To give the superintendent and executive assistant permission to start going through the non-public minutes. Patty will then review and then hand them off.
Second.
Okay. Jean's seconding. Any other discussion on those? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstain? No. We're all set. All right, now, letter D, we have donation for Dr. Morris.
Okay, thank you. So as I kind of mentioned earlier, the National Honor Society does a lot of fundraising. And this year, they have asked to donate $1,200 towards the school lunch debt to help pay for students, not just at PA, but throughout, you know, the district food program, to help pay for students' outstanding bills for the lunches over the course of the year. So given that amount, you know, we wanted to come to the board to get your approval for that. And, you know, the money's already raised. We would work with Amber to try to figure out, from an accounting perspective, how to do that. But, but that's their, their wish is to donate that money towards that cause, if you're willing to do that.
I am motion to approve, accepting the donation.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I just have a question. Do we know what the current outstanding debt is?
No, I don't.
Different schools?
That information was not provided. They also are trying to do this to surprise the food director. So they're, right, so it's kind of clandestine in a certain way. So like, in order for them to get that, they would have to kind of ask that.
I think, you know, as a board, we would want to obviously accept that donation. That's very generous of them. I think the follow-up, though, will be, how will those funds be applied? Because you're talking about individual student accounts. And how do you do that equitably? And I'm sure they can have discussions with the food director, but that would be my only concern, is making sure that it's equitable.
Any other questions?
Just one more comment that, I believe, just correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, Dan, whoever. So when there is that unpaid balance in the food service lines, that is replenished by taking money from the budget? Like, if we were moving forward next year, that's gonna be in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So I think that's, you know, something that also helped the tax rate in the residents in the town. So that's, that's awesome.
All right. Anybody else? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? No? All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. No. All right. E, we have summer hiring.
Each year, the board typically makes a motion to allow the superintendent to offer contracts during the month of July, when there are no meetings. And then typically, the first August meeting, we bring the list of staff forward to the board for nomination. So obviously, this July, it would be Superintendent Bickford that would be conducting those interviews and offering contracts.
Would there be a, so their next meeting's in two weeks, so there'd be, what, a week left or so, that you might do something like that? So the superintendent, okay.
I'll make a motion to allow the superintendent's superintendent to make hiring decisions just in the month of July? The month of July.
Yeah, I could say your last meeting in June until your first meeting in August. That way, we would cover.
That's Sandy. Thank you. Any questions, concerns? I thought you did. All right, all those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So I had one little thing about, I wanted to have a quick conversation with the school board members about, like, the fair funding. Back in March, many of us, I believe, there was a letter that went around. A lot of school board members in the state signed it. And they did present it at a public budget hearing at the state on March 12th. 438 local school board members signed it. It was 145 towns included, nine out of 13 mayors, 12 full select boards, 31 communities where all the school board members ended up signing it. And 71% of all New Hampshire public school students signed it. So we, today, we got an email, because I was one of the ones that signed it. And in the next month or two, so over the summer, they are hoping to get many school board chairs and vice chairs. And they're arranging a meeting with Governor Ayo about fixing public education funding. So we wanted to know, Carrie and I are willing to do that if that meeting happens. And we wanted to make sure that would be okay with the rest of the school board members. And if one of us, something happens and we couldn't, we'll reach out, because... Oh, yeah, it came from the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. And it just said in the next one to two months. So hopefully, soon. Thank you. All right, moving on to number nine, informational. Carrie, do it.
Okay. So this being Dr. Morris's last meeting with us, we just wanted to take a little bit, a little five-minute break and just have some cupcakes that we brought in and, you know, just to, you know, nothing would ever be large enough and grand enough to thank you for everything that you have done for, not just this board, this school district, but all, a lot of the kids in this town, the families in this town. Wait a minute, I'm not supposed to get it all choked up. Anyways, we just want to say thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. Policies.
It's my mission to send Jess with a blank page so that she starts fresh and all of our policies are off of this paper. So we, I think we can do it. I am, before you start, can I correct one thing? Just so that when we make motions, it doesn't, I, there's the wrong citation on the la, on the second reading where it says KHC. The language is act, or the coding of that policy is actually KDCA. So it's the right policy, it just had, I had the wrong letters on there. So it's, yeah, and it's, it's gonna be approved as KDCA. I didn't put that on the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that was fixed. And then the JJIC, you have a motion to add to that policy? Okay, all right, great. Thanks.
Motion to rescind the rescinded list.
Pause for a second. Doesn't pick that up right. No, it doesn't pick, you gotta wait for a second.
Any discussion on that? No? All those rescinding the rescinded list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are we making the motion to approve the Pembroke version or the New Hampshire, the school board? Okay, all right. So I will make a motion to approve the following policies. The school board, the New Hampshire School Board Association policy, AC, ACA, AC-R, two, ACN, and JICD.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those policies? No? All those approve, approving the third readings, which Carrie read off.
I can, you don't have to read them again.
Okay. Say aye.
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 Any no's, abstain? All right.
Was it JJIC or KHC?
JJIC.
Oh, that's right.
So... But he made some edits in there, too. So I would just, and if you, yeah, I would say as edited by council. Yeah. By council. You can. Yeah. Here. You can, she can have one. You did? Oh, okay.
Just so that we're aware. Move to approve policy JJIC as amended and that the board adopt this policy with the explicit limitation that for so long as the injunction, in the case of Terrell versus Adel Blute, Civil Action Number 124 CV 00251, remains in effect, the policy shall only be applied in such a manner. the policy shall only be applied in such a manner that it is not in derogation of the court's order.
I'll second.
I'm just gonna say what? I know.
Any discussion on that? Okay. All those in... Ken and, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any? No. All right. Do you have any, anything else?
On the others? Think, I mean, I didn't think of anything. I'd leave them a while ago.
Yeah. The one I know that was often approved was I M G A.
So I make a motion, I make a motion to approve policy I M G A, as written.
I'll second.
Perfect timing.
Any discussion?
All those in favor of approving I M G A?
Say aye.
Aye.
And do we need a motion for the others to move to a third reading? Just move them?
Okay.
That's much better.
Thanks, John.
Good job. All right, number 11, we have public comments, and we still have no public in the library, so we will skip public comments. Anything else? No? Oh, boy. All right.
So now, number 12, non-public session, the board has the need to go into non-public session under N H R S A 91 colon A three, Roman numeral two, small letter B and C, which is the hiring of any person as a public employee, and C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, on a roll call vote to go into non-public. Ken?
Yes.
Sharon? Carrie?
Yes.
Jean? And I'm a yes.
I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of non-public pending contract negotiations.
Second. Carrie seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think so.
Motion, second.
All those in, aye? I know.